Six thirty, call the meeting order, roll call.
Mordini, Sarchette.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
DeBorak.
Here.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I don't think I have any additions or corrections, correct?
Uh, this time, no.
Take a motion?
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Motion carries. Item four, public comments. Time and place for any comments for any items that are other than those that are on a public hearing. Anybody in the audience wish to speak to the council at this time? Hearing none or seeing none, moving on to item five. Item five, pinning ceremony of Lieutenant Dustin Bjornson, Chief. Lord yours.
Want to say a couple of quick words about former Sergeant Bjornson and now Lieutenant. Dustin's been here for twenty-two years with the Polk City Police Department, best sergeant for over ten years of that. When I first started here three months ago, Dustin really made it easy for me to be successful moving into my new role here and truly knows ins and outs of the department. He's given pretty much his entire adult life to and dedication to the Polk City Police Department, Citizens Polk City. Anybody that knows Dustin knows he is very active in community outreach and not just for his job but also in his time off. He's very vested in the well-being of our city and its citizens. As I looked at what he was doing, his job duties and all the accomplishments he's made in his career, he was doing much more than a sergeant rank would merit. I feel like I'm trying to turn back for sorry everybody if I don't look at it yet. And as we've worked through the last three months, I believe this is the correct step to take in promoting lieutenant in law enforcement realm, lieutenant just like a military officer ranks, command staff. And Dustin truly deserves his promotion. If you want to step over here for me, Dustin. Hold out your left hand for me. Raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Your name?
Dustin Bjornson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Iowa.
The Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of police lieutenant for the city of Polk City.
All?
All duties of police lieutenant.
Of police lieutenant.
For the city.
For the city of Polk City.
Polk County, Iowa.
Polk County, Iowa.
As now.
As now.
Or hereafter required by law.
Or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And then part of the promotion ceremony is pinning on of new collar brass, which our state clerk Jenny Gibbons is going to do that for Dustin.
Now I can't get those apart.
Okay. This is very courageous for her to do this.
I know.
No fit.
Roll call. Good job, Dustin.
Eric Lee's moving.
I am six. Consent agenda. Take a motion?
Go ahead.
I would like to pull number seven for separate discussion.
Take a motion, less seven.
Motion to approve everything except number seven to be discussed.
Second.
Roll call.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-one approving the partial satisfaction of development agreement for all lots on Bridge V Plat one.
I guess I would think that something like this is something that was important enough to be discussed on its own merit and not just grouped together with this. I guess I'd really like to know why are we approving just a part of it and what hammer do we have to get the rest of it done? As we did the same thing over at the hotel and as far as I know, they never completed all of the trees they were supposed to. At least it was never brought back for final approval to the council.
Councilman Lane, the resolution is satisfactions for development agreements that exist for Parker Boulevard, sanitary sewer, that and one other item, and I can't remember it right off the top of my head that have all been completed for an excess of fifteen years. Council has completed all of their work. The city has completed all of their work, but for some reason the satisfactions were never filed with the courthouse. This takes care of those satisfactions that are multiple years old.
Well, then if it's all complete, why does it say partial? What's still being left out there?
Because there's a, there is still a benefit that continues to arise and I can't remember, I don't have the agreement in front of me. Kathleen was the one that had looked at that. But there was a benefit that runs in favor of the properties that continues to exist under that development agreement and that's noted in there. So that's why we didn't, you know, I probably could have said complete satisfaction of all obligations. I mean, we could probably title it that way, but the, in terms of the obligations that are done, that is my understanding after having, staff having checked, those things are all taken care of. But there is a benefit under that agreement that runs to the property owners and that still remains in place. That's why it's just a partial satisfaction rather than a complete satisfaction.
Okay. I mean, I've, I've been on the council for fifteen years and I'm confused by the wording. I can only imagine what somebody else and the citizens would think that this is just being swept under the rug.
The reason that we're doing now, we have, over the period of time, is this issue has, this issue has come up when title is examined for lots that are being sold. So we've just done it on an individual basis over the years. We, we had the last request, Kathleen came back and said, you know, really, we, all the obligations are taken care of, so we could do it, so it applies to all lots, so we won't have to do it on an individual basis. So that's why it's coming to you now.
Okay. I think it could have been worded more clearly. Thank you for the explanation. With that, I would move to approve it.
Second.
Roll call.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Motion carries. Item B, resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-seven adopting plans, specifications, form of contract and opinion of probable cause. Need a motion?
Move. Second.
Roll call.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, new business action. Item one, two thousand sixteen street repair project. Item A, public hearing. This time, it's time to close a regular meeting and open public hearing on the two thousand sixteen street repair project. Ask the clerk when the notice is published.
September ninth.
Any written comments for or against?
Yes, sir.
I'll ask staff to provide a report.
We received bids last Wednesday. The low bid was TK Concrete. We've done a number of projects in the city in the past. The low bid was two hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, which is about four and a half percent below the engineer's estimate of two hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Everything is in order and we recommend that the city accept the bid and prices were favorable, so we may be able to add some work to the contract and stay within the budget.
Can the work these folks perform?
I haven't personally, but.
Sorry, that's my idea. Okay.
That our firm has.
Yeah, we're curious.
Yeah, we've had them on the Oakwood Street project. There were some problems up there. There's no doubt about it, but they did take care of everything in the end. And they did the town square sidewalk and they did a perfect job there. So, thank you.
Is anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the, or the project?
I would like to hear the staff give a report on the fact that this is finishing up a ten-year project. I've had lots of questions about the, are not finishing the original part of town like has been discussed and going back to the stuff and why that was happened. So, your explanation that was given to me last week or two weeks ago is very satisfactory, but I think the people of Polk City deserve to hear that.
As far as, you mean, we've always had an ongoing street, street repair program and we've, we've taken them in chunks and this will complete that list. Now, streets always degrade, so there's going to be more, but this completes that first list that we've been working on for years. And we will be going back into the other neighborhoods, but this, this time we're allowed that repair money to try to get to that point where we can say that is finished and then we will start making other repairs as necessary.
Yeah, that's what, I just think with the questions I've been asked, the public needs to hear that.
Sure.
Of why we're continuing on. I tried, I explained it the best I could, but sometimes they want to hear it from somebody higher up, such as yourself.
I'd just like to add that the money you spend maintaining streets is just like when you maintain your house or your car. That, that, those are investments in your infrastructure.
Yeah, and I agree, but that is not the question. The question is, we're always working on the foundation and never work on the roof.
Well, if, I, I'm just saying, if you don't spend the money to maintain your streets.
Oh, I'm not arguing that. I'm not arguing that. I'm, in fact, I'm not arguing any of it. People ask me, why we're repairing streets that have been here twenty years and ignoring the ones that have been here seventy years?
Yep. I'd just like to thank you for bringing that up. I get those same questions while we're abandoning the original part of town.
We've always had the plan where the asphalt streets are in there and we have, we've done Grime Street, we've done Van Dorn and Booth, Washington are all asphalt streets now. But we try to go back and forth and the projects are pretty, pretty healthy when we go back in and do those street replacements. You know, we're, we're looking at a million dollars almost each time. So we have to usually build up funds over a couple of years to do that. And like I say, I would look forward to pop the possibilities of going back to that neighborhood here in a few years and, and really get some stuff done.
And we've talked about it, the need's going to be to go back in and do an overlay before we go in and do the major projects.
Right, and we're, exactly.
And I brought that up. Of course, now, people really like the way Grimes turned out. They like the way Washington and Booth have turned out. They like their projects.
Yeah.
They would like to have that done to their streets too. And I've, I heard from people on Davis and I heard from other, when is it our turn?
Yeah.
But I, I just wanted an explanation out there so they could hear it from somebody other than me.
Well, I think we, Mike's done a pretty good job with the, the corner that we painted him with this. And I'll just echo what Gary brought up earlier with Deer Haven coming on. There's probably an opportunity to do some more of those roads in a little bit quicker fashion, but that's not right now. So, I think they're legitimate questions, but there is a plan and I think we're executing well to that plan.
Thank you. That's all.
Perfect. Need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
Will move.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Motion carries. Item B, resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-seven adopting plans, specifications, form of contract and opinion of probable cause. Need a motion?
Move. Second.
Roll call.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-eight, making a word of construction contract.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, resolution number two thousand sixteen eighty-nine, approving contract and bond.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Motion carries. Perfect. Yes, sir?
Just remember this contract, they were given the option to start in the fall or in the spring, and I don't know if we have their answer yet. Do we, Laura?
Not a firm answer, but I believe it'll be the spring.
Okay. So, that is a possibility.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Item two, RTM Plat one. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-two, scheduling a public hearing for rezoning two point five two eight acres from Public Utility District to Light Industrial District. That will be for October tenth. That's as close to six thirty as we can. I'll take a motion.
So, second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-three, site plan for Polk City Storage on Lot One.
As part of your agenda packet, you'll see the proposed site plan and the engineers' review comments on this. The site plan is in conformance and they have answered all of the major items that are necessary. The, usually you would have a rezoning done and those items taken care of prior to, but this area is already zoned M1 and there was no real good reason to not move the site plan forward.
Questions?
Yeah, so I guess I was wondering, first of all, how we could approve a site plan before we did the rezoning. But if what they're doing is already legal on the Public Utility District, why are they bothering to rezone it?
The area that the site plan deals with is not in the U1. The U1, for some reason, I can't tell you why, has been zoned that way for quite some time and never been corrected. It should have been a M1 many, many, many years ago. So the site plan is for the area that is currently zoned M1 and has nothing to do with the U1 portion of the rezoning.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, we don't get the cart before the horse. And I totally understand. Maybe a better way to explain this is, there's a whole lot of moving parts and the RTM took care of all of the issues that were out there and, and brought everything into compliance. And that's why you're going to see different pieces on the rezoning and, and plating and that type of thing.
Okay.
Can I make one note?
Do that.
Kathleen advised that the motion to approve the site plan should be subject to no certificate of occupancy until they record their plat. And that is so that some easement issues can be cleared up. Multiple easement issues on.
Thank you.
On the subject of lots.
And the resolution is written as such.
Yes.
Questions or a motion?
Any additional comments you guys want to make on any of this or?
Glad to tell them that.
Who's anxious questions if you have it. Let us approve it and get out of the way.
You can say it.
We're good either way.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-three. Second.
Roll call, please.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
I just like to make a comment before we move on. At the P and Z meeting, there was very few people in that room to remember, that remembered what that looked like twenty-five or thirty years ago. I did and maybe one member. And I want to commend you guys and Mr. Lent before you, the, unless you were here, you don't recognize the improvements that were made down there. And that is appreciated. So, thank you.
Yeah, definitely looks a lot better. Item three, consider motion to approve second reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen twenty-five hundred rezoning approximately fifty-nine point four acres owned by MJR Developments LLC from A1 to R1. Take a motion?
Will move. Second.
Roll call.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item A, consider motion to waive the third reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen twenty-five hundred.
I would move we waive the third reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen twenty-five hundred and send it on for publication as required by law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-four, approving site plan for the stop at Broadway. Who's here that wants to speak to that? Fine young gentleman in the back.
There's four of us here, so I'll.
You were the young gentleman I was calling.
Yeah, I'm the young guy. My name's David Libber. I represent Iowa Polk Investors and Sanders Construction. Our intent tonight was to present you with the, the same design set and samples that we brought to the planning and zoning committee. And I'm guessing you probably don't have any of that in front of you. We're not, we're not sure at this point, but I'm, I'm not a design engineer or civil engineer, but our architect and our design guy are not here for whatever reason.
Okay.
I can tell you at the planning and zoning mini, meeting that the, the design set, we've spent a considerable amount of time and effort to put together what we thought was a good design for the city square, to include some, some new product types, to make the building actually look like it fit into the, to the city square. At the planning and zoning committee, there was a comment relative to the backside. And I can tell you that we took a look at that. We made a few minor adjustments, but frankly, at this point, as the operations manager, I have a budget that I have to stay under and that, that really gets us outside of the budget. So the design set that we brought with a few minor exceptions is the one that we will use. Now, subject to that, I would maybe ask for the same kind of deal that our predecessors got there, but I suppose I won't get that design set. I, I don't know what to do other than to, I, I don't have anything to show.
I guess, Ron, you were at the P and Z meeting, so I guess if you want to speak to that, I.
Well, I can tell you that it passed unanimous. There was some comments made about the west side, which was very visible when you're coming down Broadway. I don't know, you, you probably didn't get to see the email, but we had an email from, I had an email from, I don't know, from one of the members of P and Z, very pleased with your willingness to work with us and the changes that were made.
And, and we did make some minor changes to that, try to bring a similar look to saw it around, certainly not the full look that you'll see if you're looking at it from the square, but to, to kind of make it blend in. We also had intended to present tonight a colored image of that backside, which I think would help because the initial design set was not colored. It was just like a black and white. So, I thought that would be helpful too, but.
Well, and I was trying to pull up the original agenda from P and Z that I looked at before and, and I thought it looked outstanding. But I've been excited about this for a while, so I'm not maybe as objective as I should be, but I, I did think it looked pretty good and, and the, the audio wasn't the best on the meeting, but the only feedback were suggestions. And so they, they did approve everything as it was. And if you made some tweaks to make it even better.
And I know Kathleen is not here tonight, but I think all of the comments that are critical, you say, to the, to the design and the codes and that kind of thing. I believe we've addressed them all.
That, that's true.
Yep.
And that's my question. It meets the quality, the, the conditions. It's just opinions.
Yes.
I just have a real easy question and just because I'm a nitpick at this stuff. Couple of months ago or so, we approved an address change to Third, Third Street.
One oh four, yeah. Yes, one oh four.
Yeah, and that's, so I got, my question is, why is it called the Stop at Broadway if everything is moved out with the entrance being from Third?
That's a good question. And if I find the culprit that named it that, I'll certainly.
You want it to be the Stop at.
Required to put on the sign, something.
No, I'm just wondering.
That's not going to be his final name. As I understand it, we need to come back, I think, again, to talk about that in front of the P and Z and the council, I think. They needed to have a replication of lettering in that and we had called it when we first started the project, the Stop at Broadway. So we just left it that way. That is not the intent for it to be the final name.
Okay.
No, I really didn't want you to change it to the Stop.
Well, that's a consideration.
There you go. Well, I, I'm going to echo Councilman Sarge's comments that, very excited to see this project get going and cleaning up the area down there. Long time coming. So, very excited to see this going through. Any other comments or take a motion? You know?
Make a motion to through resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-four. Second.
Roll call.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
So I'll just make a real quick comment because I think it applies to all three of these things that, and I acknowledge Ron's point. I don't remember what it looked like, but I do recognize how much better all of these three areas. And I know we've got a lot to see on, on the new annexation part, but I'm, I think the feel of the town is going to change a lot. And this corridor over here in particular with the stop and the work at Polk County Heating and Cooling is going to be right in that area. So I think that's, the movement that we're making and search some other areas that need to kind of step up likewise, but very excited about the direction that we're going in. So I'm looking forward to see everything come through.
Totally agree. Item five, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-five, final, final take application for Davis and Tyler Intersection Reconstruction Project in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
Will move. Second.
Roll call.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchette.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six.
Do we know why that group from Rockwell said he didn't respond to this by any chance?
No, I don't know why.
Too bad.
Oh, to that?
Yeah.
That, okay, gotcha.
Our new project.
There's a lot of projects bidding right now, so.
Heck of a problem to have. Item six, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-six, approving the towing contract for the police department with McKinney Towing and Recovery. Chief, you want to comment to that at all?
Yeah, this is something that I've been wanting to do since I started and it has multiple benefits to the city. It gives us a dedicated towing contractor with, with you guys all the contracts with stipulations on response time to the city for impounds. Gives us a discounted rate for city vehicles when we need to tow's on those or for like, with our burglary cases we had, we had to tow a couple of vehicles for safety purposes. We had to pay full price to the company we were using. We'll get a discounted rate under the contract. And one of the largest benefits of it is, is we use one company. They know how we wish for them to respond to our accidents on our streets. Looking through the proposals and I asked Mr. Mahana to go with the proposals with me as well. We received two proposals back at our request forum. We received two back and after I discussed it with Lieutenant Bjornson and Mr. Mahana, we decided that McCain Towing was the best one to move forward. We can, like I said, explain to them how we want accidents handled. In his proposal, he details how him and his employees are, go through a lot of training. It's not even necessary, but it makes them much more qualified to handle large accidents. They handle. to handle a mass casualty incident, and the owners actually do NIMs training for the traffic incident management, things like that. So it makes our roadway safer, we clear the roads quicker, less secondary accidents, and if we don't have a contract in place, we're just calling whoever can get there as soon as we don't have that benefit. There's really zero liability to the city, and we're not required to do anything by it, but it gives us a lot of benefit as well.
I have a couple of questions. First off, we're not establishing a monopoly in this town, are we? I mean, if my truck doesn't start, I can call whoever I want to come.
Correct, private tow's can use whoever they want to.
Now, answer this question, what if it's a snowy day, and a car just slips off into the ditch?
Yep.
Tow trucks not going to hook up to it without a police officer there?
No, they won't come unless we call them.
Okay, because otherwise that would cost $765 to get that car out of the ditch, which is outrageous.
Okay, well, then we don't have to pay any of the fees on the fee schedule, that's if someone will call them to utilize them. And the fees are comparable to any other towing company in that area, most cheaper than a lot of them.
Well, it's $175 an hour, minimum of four hours if they have to get in a ditch to hook on.
Well, and the owner of the towing company here, if you'd like to ask him, the owner of the company here, if you'd like to ask him any questions directly too.
That's a towing or accident recovery rate, that's a worst case scenario, your car's over the bank, you know, down in the 200-foot ravine, that's not the same price as, you're just on the shoulder and there's snow.
4O is minimum, is 4O is minimum, does it make a difference once you step out of your truck into that ditch?
It's my discretion, I do billing, and it's not a, you know, deer hit is different than your truck being submerged in a lake. And as far as the monopoly goes, if your car broke down, you have the right to call whoever. The police can offer a suggestion, or they can say, we're contracted with McKee Towing, they can respond within this timeframe, but you have, you can call whoever.
If I interject, we, the city's not weird to pay any of those rates.
I know, I'm worried about if my son or daughter's there here and slip off into the ditch on a snowy day.
And they can call whoever they like for a tow.
My, the way I read through this, if you show up on the scene, these are the people that are going to come, these are what the person's going to have to pay. Just answer that question.
No, not at all.
Okay.
No, we cannot require anybody to use a certain service. This is if, we stop someone, and they don't have a driver's license and/or insurance, or property of their vehicle, or some other violation, that under law, we impound their vehicle, then we would call them to come impound the vehicle for us. The person that is responsible for having their car towed, they're responsible for all the fees, they don't have to cost us anything. The fee schedule was placed in there just for reference of the contracting rates for private tow's, but nobody will be required to use any towing service they don't want to.
Okay.
And that's a worst case scenario, you know, we're, we have, we have to maintain all this equipment, personnel, training, everything, and nobody has to call us. And then they call us and they say, our car slipped over, it's down a ravine, it's stuck in the trees, you need to come get it. You know, we have to come get it, and that's where the power timeframe comes in. Law enforcement wants us to clean roads as quick as possible, prevent secondary accidents, save everybody on the scene if we get it, get it out of there. So we're trained to do that quickly, so we show up, we do it quickly, and if we're going by the hour, we have to, we have to place a minimum on there, so we can cover our sentences, so that we're not operating at a loss. I mean, I can get accidents on the interstate in 18 minutes, but if I only charge for 18 minutes, I'll be out of business. And something off the shoulder isn't a full blown recovery, so it won't be a 4O minimum.
Okay.
Now, if I understood you right, you sent requests out for bids, and you only received two.
I only sent out three, and they were the ones that were within a geographic area that would allow a 30-minute response time, and it was Ankeny Towing, McKinney Towing, and Hanifin Towing. Hanifin did not respond to us, and I received proposed services from McKinney Towing and Hanifin Towing.
That's a question that we could ask all the time, and so I just wanted to clear that up. I thought that's what I understood, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification as well. Take a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 2016-86. Second.
Roll call.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Dvorak?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, Pine Ridge Island, before you even knew A, B, C, D, I guess I'll ask staff to give us an update, it's been a busy week.
It's been very busy, and I'm going to, this afternoon, Amy was working with Patrick White. Patrick White is the attorney for the Pine Ridge Estates LLC that is looking to be the grantor, a grantee of an easement from Polk City for the island, and with that, I seem to be having all kinds of trouble with the computer tonight, if you could kind of go through the last easement that has gone back and forth, which was received later today.
First, start from the premise that this is the same easement primarily that was before you, two weeks ago. They've just now had an attorney that has looked over it and made some proposed revisions to it, but going through it kind of item by item, the first paragraph of it gives them the right to put in the island, if you agree to enter into the easement with them. The way it was originally written, I mean, it's entitled sign easement, again, going to Dan's question or statement on that previous document, now maybe we need to clean that up to just say island rather than sign, because everyone understands that the sign won't be there, given the constraints that are going to be in that island. And that was the reason that the, as written, it says if the grantee chooses, because they're, I mean, they're really going, if it's a sign, it's going to be, they have such tight constraints, they're not sure whether they're going to want a sign in there or not. But the first paragraph gives them the opportunity to put in that island, the second paragraph gives that opportunity, or the right to them for a 10-year period, and that it ends at the end of that 10-year period unless there's a mutual agreement for that to be extended. In the event that it is removed, or is not extended, or at any time revoked, the document provides that it's their responsibility to remove that island and restore it.
Let me ask a question, does that automatically renew then for another 10 years, or is that under a timeframe?
No, it does not. It does not, it will need to come back to you in that 10-year timeframe.
But it's another 10-year agreement, the way I read that, right?
Yeah.
Or additional 10 years?
Yeah, I mean, unless agreed otherwise.
Gotcha. Yep, I understand.
But it will not automatically renew.
Okay.
The maintenance, obviously, is the responsibility of the grantee. The city has no maintenance responsibility. In the event that the grantee would fail to, paragraph four provides that in the event that they're not, they fail to maintain, we have the, we will give them, it was a 30-day notice. Let me, instead of looking at the draft I have, I think we need to clear, I think something got taken out that shouldn't have been taken out, but 30-day notice, right to cure within that 30-day notice, if it's not cured within that 30-day period, the easement is revoked. So that's your hammer on the, if revoked, then they have the, they are required to remove anything that's in that area. The grantee's responsibilities, it does provide that anything that is put into that island will be in compliance with not only our ordinances, but SUDAS, we want to specifically call that out, because that's been a big issue, want to make sure it's very clear that they have to comply with SUDAS. The indemnification provision, they're responsible, they will agree to indemnify the city for anything, any damages that are caused by that island. You know, if they're not putting in a sign, that's just planting, probably not a lot of liability there, but they do agree to indemnify us for anything that would happen or be caused by that island, and that's pretty much the substance of the agreement. They have set up a limited liability company to, that would be the party that we would look to, again, no matter what the responsibilities are in this easement, that LLC and the members of that LLC are responsible, you know, it's up to them, how, who the members are, how they fund it, you know, how they perpetually maintain that island, you know, that's not something that we really want to get into, we're looking to that LLC. They don't perform, we'll revoke the agreement, the island comes out, everything else is their responsibility. The other thing that, after discussion with Kathleen, you remember that they have given, previously given to us plans for the signs on the side, we kind of culled that back out of our responsibility, because that really is between them and whoever's property that they're putting, may put that sign to those plantings on, that, you know, unless there is a requirement that they get a sign approval or a sign permit to be on those properties, that really, again, is between private property owners, and so we've not, we've taken that out of what any thing, anything we're reviewing. So, the only thing that you have to make a decision on tonight is really whether you want to move forward and grant them an easement, and we did find out today the time is of essence, because the DOT is moving from East South Side Drive to this area come Thursday, and they, so they need to know before they make that move as to whether that island is going to be, a portion of that island, our original island is going to be left in or not.
So, just a second here, so as far as A, B, and C go, the design and engineering proposal, perpetual maintenance and demonstrate funds, we're not talking about that at this point, we're dealing with the easement on D.
Right, because the other things then will all kind of follow through, flow from that easement, because they'll have to comply with, you know, provide the design and engineering proposal, and we'll make sure that it complies with ordinance and SUDAS. The perpetual maintenance agreement is really your easement, and how they deal with it, you know, within their LLC, that's up to them. And again, demonstrating the funds are financing to cover the costs, they've got a mechanism in place, how they assess that to the members is entirely up to them.
Ron, what you have?
So, before we get to where we're going to decide on this, and I don't know what to do anymore, the amount of time and money that's been spent on this is getting ridiculous, but I have to say, and just express my extreme dissatisfaction on how this has been handled, not by the city, I appreciate Gary, I think is leading the effort on this, but we listened to a group of people five weeks ago now at this point, and took them on good faith that they were going to work through this, and if that, you don't, given that position to come back a few weeks after, to not comment to emails, to direct to an attorney and say nothing's going to happen unless you talk to my attorney, is not how you work to a resolution. So, if you're actually representing the people of your neighborhood, and I have some genuine questions based on the people that I've talked to that you're doing that, but if you're trying to do that for the people that you think you are, you failed miserably. And I think there's enough action between that meeting and this meeting to get rid of it on the face of it. So, going forward, I really hope that there's a lesson learned on how to work with people, and how to take a group that has the authority to do this, and treat them with respect, and treat the city administrator with respect, and you've not done that to this point. So, again, I'm going to try and divide the motions and the mistreatment that's happened from a couple individual people, and I'm not directing this at all the people that were here a couple weeks ago again, but it's completely out of line and completely unfair. So I think that just needs to be said, and I'm guessing you'll probably not do anything with it based on how you've acted at this point, but I just want to go on record that accurately reflects what's happened the last couple weeks.
I also want to say I have a very hard time voting yes on this, mainly because this easement showed up, that was sitting on here when I got here 15 minutes before the meeting. I've not had time to read through it, I don't sign anything that I don't read first, I don't vote yes on anything I don't read first. Our own city attorney said something's been taken out that shouldn't have been, and the one that's in front of us. So, I just want to let you know why my vote is going to be no when it comes up. Is there any comments from, I mean, has this just been a one-way street as far as communication goes? Has it been, is this all just, has it been any roadblocks that has stopped the communication? I'm just asking in fairness.
In fairness, and I'll echo Rob's, Councilman Sargent's comments, in fairness, city administrator sent an email on Tuesday, asking, you know, making a request that we needed to have this updated so that we could get in our council, on our agenda, in our packet, so we could have it by Friday, and, you know, we received it today.
Yeah, two things, I do see that what I thought had been taken out, I do find.
Okay.
That's saying that aside, there, it does say 30 days. Their attorney did contact me in the middle of last week, I think it was Wednesday, advised me that he was in trial, and he was, so he would have a difficult time responding as timely as I needed him to, but he, from that point forward, I have had several phone conversations and pieces of correspondence back and forth with him, so.
I'm going back all the way to the meeting four weeks ago, and it was asked for and provided almost immediately by Gary what needed to come back, and we're, what, three weeks past that now? If they had come back and say, hey, we're working on these seven, eight things, whatever, we got four of them done, we're continuing to work on them, that's one thing, but to say, we've got an attorney, everything's going through them, and to ignore other emails, that's the scenario that I was trying to outline.
I may comment on that, please.
Just a second here, does anybody else have any other comments to?
I'll just back up what has already been said, I mean, the city went above and beyond doing something we never do for this very reason, I know a lot of us questioned that might, whether we should even be opening Pandora's box, but they didn't meet at the time SUDAS, and so many of us went along with it. Their comments were that, you know, they would take care of this, that, and whatever, which they haven't, and contrary to popular belief, there's no savings, we're spending more staff time, attorney time, engineering time, on stuff that could be better utilized elsewhere. The city is bigger than one neighborhood in one flowerbed. I don't know what else to say, we have put out the olive branch, and when I look at those emails, and when I find people that are calling the DOT, going behind the city's back, disrupting things, it's a piss-poor way of doing business, I'm sorry, and you had your opportunity here to call everybody liars and everything from the past, you know, enough's enough. I agree with what has been said here, I question whether everybody in Pine Ridge cares, because those that I've talked to down there could care less. So I'm glad that a certain group of people cared and got the attention of people to bring this forward, but this is why we try to follow SUDAS and everything else to the T, because otherwise, the city doesn't work in a organized, controlled fashion, it's just, I don't want this because, I want that because, I wish life was that easy, but it's not. I don't know what else to say, you know, I guess this is the lesson you were taught as you were growing up, be careful what you break apart or deviate from.
I haven't tried to hide my feelings from the very beginning, I haven't seen anything happen to change my mind. I still think it's going to come back to us again later on down the road, and something that was done illegal to begin with, my feelings and my vote has not changed.
I'll give you a couple minutes.
We have done everything you've asked to do, we've gone above and beyond what you've asked to do, even though none of us sound to you folks two weeks ago, indicating what we have done.
So you've responded to all the emails that you received?
Once the easement was put in front of council, I was instructed to legally not respond, he does represent us, we have responded to every email, I think even got an email Sunday from you, Gary, that indicated things have to go through, have to go through our legal council. We have set up our LLC, we have set up our operating agreement, we have set up a bank account, we have, you know, retained a landscape architect, we have got the plan designed, we even gave that to you three weeks ago. I guess I don't see how we not delivered what, you know, we said we're going to deliver.
Now, as I got your plans on 9/20, it's not three weeks ago, that actually identified
That actually identified the plants, the island, also contained cost estimates. That same day, I sent back to you a letter, email if you will, that the plan material that you had in there did not meet the SUDAS requirement. It was higher. And from that moment on, there was no communication until Sunday.
You're correct, Gary, because at that point, as we were still working even at the easement, I felt because we were such limited funds until the easement was granted, there was no reason for us to extend, to spend more funds, hire a landscape architect and engineering firms until we got the easement granted.
So, why couldn't that have been passed along?
When you're told by legal counsel not, not to communicate, I don't know what to say, Rob.
I'd say get different legal counsel.
Wait. So, three weeks ago, you had legal counsel saying, "Don't, don't talk to the city."
Correct.
About a partnership with the city to gain access to an easement.
A month ago, when I stood up here and handed you a packet, it had all the information that I thought you needed. I thought that packet was basically our plan. I mean, that packet I gave you was 45 pages thick that had our.
I know it was, how many pages it was. It had the petition doubled up in there, which is a little bit misleading, but.
I mean, I thought we've done everything we've been asked to do. And to be honest with you, every time we're asked to do something, it's we've done it, and then we get asked to do something again. And so, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, I mean, we even sent out 115 letters to our residents, and we've had information from the residents already. It was my understanding from our council today that city council, the city attorney and my council represented our group to come to an understanding.
And the last comment that I made to the, to your attorney was, "Keep in mind that I will present this, but it's a council decision, it is not mine."
I think the hard part is, is 3:30 on the night of the meeting.
Well, I think that, obviously, I would like to follow through. It's obvious that the other council folks do not want this to move forward, there's been put this much time into it so far. I think that's, it's.
Not everybody's voiced that. You don't know that.
I stated quite clearly why I would vote no.
Right. I just said that. I mean, I said, "I think I'm probably alone in this event." I've also put a lot of time in it as well, but that's not, that's not the point. Seems like there's more personal things involved than there is really the process itself, from what I've heard, and the way that things have been handled by, if that's, you know, I just, it's frustrating, but, because we're just right there to get it done, but, yeah, I just, I don't need to say anymore.
Can you imagine the cost to the city if on every street project, on every curb, on every everything, we have people getting attorneys and engineers developed above and beyond the scope of what we're already doing? It's not just personal, it's, it's bad business for the city. Some of us try to look beyond that, even though we made the comments that we'll probably regret it. And then the extra stuff just confirmed. And, you know, I'm sorry that the attorney told you to talk to that, but when, when I've got the emails in front of me, when Gary is getting emails saying.
Your staff requested us to go get engineering. And that, and that's where I feel that I've been taken advantage of too, is, you're right, we've spent a ton of time doing this, but, but it's coming to a request of your staff.
Well, despite what you said, Dave, I, I do completely disagree with a lot of the characterization from Dennis on this, but if there is in fact that we're at the precipice or whatever he said, I don't want city staff to spend any more time, but if they think they have everything that they need, and there are other options for us to move forward, give them another two weeks to kick the can down the road a little bit farther, give them another two weeks to come back with everything as the process was clearly outlined, because if that's not happened despite what you've said to this point. But if there's really, if this is really that important to the number of people that they've alluded to, I don't want this to get hung up on the failure of a couple people to represent this accurately. If that's what they want, like I said in the meeting, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but are it for me to tell people what's important in their neighborhood. I don't want, procedurally, I don't think it's personal, but there are, it's not been handled well. And so, I'm willing to separate that from the Xs and Os of this and entertain that as an option, if that's viable and.
Well, if I'm going to add on to what Rob just said and go along with his suggestion there, you know, what I would want in two weeks is every single thing, not some of it, not we've thought of, not we've talked to, not my attorney was busy. I'd want that, I'd want a timeline when the plants and everything are going to be in, I want everything completely done, or if not, my answer would be no in two weeks. That's as honest as I can be. That's just getting to the point of being ridiculous.
I just want to say that I hope, we have all learned from this. I hope Dennis, you and your, and your neighbors have learned from this. This is what happens when the rules are not followed. When you start making exceptions to the rules, no matter who it be for, a developer, a home builder, it's going to come back and hit you later on. And I just hope everybody learned from that.
So, what action do we take at this point?
My suggestion would be that your action is to approve the easement agreement, because everything else flows through there.
Can we delay that for two weeks and get everything?
That, that's an issue, I don't know, that's a DOT issue, not, yeah, yeah, from a legal standpoint, yeah, as long as it doesn't affect your DOT project.
I don't want to enter into any agreements if we don't have everything satisfied.
I agree, because then you have 30 days, and then we have another excuse why this isn't going to be done for another 30 days, and we end up like we have with some of these houses where we go through the circus court system, that God knows what whack job's going to be a judge that day. You can't trust that. I, to me, it's either we have the right path or we don't even start down the road. Because trying to work with a group that says, "Talk to my attorney," that's, that's not the way I want to do exceptions to the rule. And I think that's what I'm hearing down the line.
And I do believe that if the DOT continues on with the way that they're doing, the city always has the right to go back in and pour that island back. If we don't, so even if the DOT only takes it out so far, it would be our responsibility to make corrections and to follow the policies set by council. So, if it's on October 10th, all this means is that the DOT is not taking the island out and paving it back. At that point in time, it would be up to the city to take out the island and pave it
Which goes completely against my original way when I voted for it. I said clearly, "There cannot be one dime of public money on this project." And we're way over knee-deep in cost already.
By not taking the island out, you're actually saving about $4,800.
Where's that $4,800 coming from? We've not been able to put our finger on that.
Danielle, the engineer from the DOT, said the city would be needing a bill for over the concrete to fill in the area beyond DOT easement.
Interesting. It's not the word we heard.
What did Danielle tell you today, Gary?
$3,500.
Oh. Okay. It doesn't make any difference, because we don't have any savings when we're paying attorneys, engineers, city administrators, and city personnel to go down there and tend to a flowerbed.
Well, and I will concede, Dennis, that you're probably getting penalized for the DOT, which has been an absolute disaster from the, from the start of this project before the island was even relevant. We're putting turning lanes in places that need them, but don't need them as much as some other places up by the marina. And they went around us on that, and if there's one group that, it's, they don't work well with others because they don't have to. And I wish I could say we avoid working with them going forward, but we can't. But I'm glad they got the opportunity to rail on them a little bit for a public setting, because they deserve it.
And if you do talk to Danielle, please thank her for finally getting back to the city administrator, because we were trying to put this together. That was nice of her to do her job. Two weeks later.
So, at this point, I kind of need a motion or direction or something here, guys.
Can you get everything done in the next two weeks?
Is it okay to assume the easement is going to be approved so we can spend our money wisely then, or?
That's, you come to terms and are comfortable with the origin of the easement?
Yes. Yeah. I, I'm comfortable with the, I was comfortable with my easement, I'm comfortable with the changes that have been made to it. I do think that probably it should be cleared up to not have any reference to a sign, because that most likely is.
And that's, we understand, if the current climate's like, can I go back?
No more.
But I think when you, when you say, "Are we good with that?" I think it's important to know that even if we're good with the easements, if those other requirements aren't met, I got one no vote here, and I probably have two more, I imagine.
What you could do is a motion to defer the final vote on the easement to the next meeting.
So.
Are you putting anything else with that, or is that everything, with the understanding that everything's coming back?
With the understanding that basically all requirements and timelines given on when they will be completed are met? If not, I mean, my, my answer is black and white at this point.
Second.
Roll call. Oh, go ahead, Danielle.
Let me be very clear, what is it we're voting on? Just to defer voting on it?
Either or, or not, the next meeting.
Okay.
With no, no cost?
No extra, no kicking the can down the road, no excuses, no, "My attorney had a cough and was watching TV," or what attorneys do when they don't have time.
Thirty-eight. No, have a no cost suit, right? You mean that was the other comment on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call.
Devaughn?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Lane?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just one last comment. My, my no vote was because I don't want them to work any harder on it, I don't want them spending any more money on it, I don't want us to spend any more money on it. So, if this would have, you know, never mind.
Yep. Well, and I'll add on to that, Rob, and I'll take it from there. To me, as far as I'm concerned, the city works its time. I don't think we should spend another penny or another minute on the phone. Either it all comes back to us or we're done. That was agreement five weeks ago, and regardless of people's memory, that's not being upheld. So, it is what it is.
I agree with that, and I'll finally just add on if there would have been actually voting for the easement tonight, it had been overwhelmingly defeated.
I made mayor's report, just in regards to this whole situation of what's been going on, there has been a lot of staff time. Gary, we have spent countless hours on the phone, emailed, staff time with attorney, engineer, and council as a whole. So, this has been a tough one, and I appreciate everybody's time and effort on it. Congratulations, Dustin, but I think he left, didn't he?
Yep.
And the other thing that I'm, I'm going to defer, but I'm going to ask Ryan, since he was here, he wanted to be here earlier and he had to step out, but we've got a couple of questions regarding the sign of the new funeral home, and we asked Ryan to come tonight, and so I'm going to call in and remember my report if anybody doesn't mind.
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, Frederickville Funeral Information Care. Jenny's heard and Gary's heard, there's obviously been some complaints about the sign. What we've done to fix that is one I'm learning every day. I've never done anything like that in my life. Fact, I just got both sides working, that's why I left. The guy called me after hours, so both sides are working. I turned the brightness down, and then at 10 o'clock, it just goes to 1:00, and then it also, the lettering is in blue, it probably says Frederickville up above the clock. And then at 6:00 in the morning, that's when other stuff comes on again. The big reason for the sign in general is, you know, when I do have services, I will put the person's picture up there and service information, date, time, where it's at, as long as the family agrees to that. If anybody's priced obituaries lately, they're through the roof. And again, that's a cost-saving measure to get the word out to the community. So, typically, I hang flyers up around town too. I haven't had the opportunity to serve family here yet, but I still hope to, that's why I came to town and investing money in it. So, anything else that we could do to tweak or to assist, you know, any city, it can be a community assigned to, I wouldn't mind putting some city stuff on there, as long as you guys have what you want on it, and I don't have to spend a lot of time with it. Picture that I could put up there relatively easy. So, any other questions that you have, I would gladly answer those for you.
You say it goes into, for lack of a better word, dark mode?
Yep.
At 10 o'clock until 6:00 AM?
Mm-hmm.
I know it isn't noisy, but it's still disruptive. If it could go from 10 to 7 to match our noise ordinance, I would feel a lot more comfortable.
That's very easy to do, and I think that's, that's not a problem at all. If it was, you know, 8 or 9, I would kind of ask differently, because obviously I want traffic to see me when I'm there. So, that's not a problem at all, that could be changed. I can't guarantee I can do it tonight, I'm going to wait till tomorrow when the guy can help me do that again, because that's the scheduled setting and whatnot. And I also learned, obviously, white's the brightest light, it takes a lot more energy to make light, so I've been trying not to use the whites. That first couple nights I had it up, it was glaring with a white postcard and some pictures on it. So, you know, your blues and your blacks background is kind of what I've been trying to do more of as well, especially at night, it's going to be all black with the blue lettering, so.
Well, I said, "Thanks," and I'm great to work with, I mean, you got right on it, and we appreciate it. That's good.
Good. Thanks, guys.
And it may not be the best way, but I know there was one person that now realized there is a funeral home in town because of this, so.
And that's disappointing here, I don't deserve, so there's unfortunately been a rent of assets in Polk City lately, and I was not chosen to serve the families, which is always disappointing when you're here. And, but that is, they have the right to choose whatever, and it's one of the hardest businesses to start there is, because where they took mom, they're going to take dad, and where they took dad, they're going to take mom, so being the new guy is tough. So, by all means, I, you have to advertise from all different angles that you can, and 6,000 people drive by that a day, so that's pretty darn important to me.
Well, and I want to thank you for jumping on it real quick. You know, we had a couple emails right away, I think it was last Friday morning, I was on the phone with him by 8 o'clock, and we jumped on it real fast, you guys did, and I really appreciate it. And I know that there was a couple other things that came in, and you guys were real quick to be responsive on that, and wanting to be a good friend and neighbor, and I appreciate it a lot.
Good, I appreciate it, guys, thanks for having me, and I'm sorry I missed the call earlier.
Oh, you're fine.
I just wanted to say, thanks to staff for acting on this right away. Thank you for your willingness to cooperate, compromise. I hope it's appreciated by the neighbors up there and that we can just move forward with this whole thing.
Amen.
And thanks for coming at a moment's notice tonight, too.
Yeah, no, not a problem at all, sorry I was late.
Nope.
It looks good, you can see it from here.
Yeah, good, we'll take a look on the way up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here on a black Tahoe?
A black Tahoe?
Yes. Could you come let me out?
Aren't you close to me?
Probably. Yeah. Probably. I just don't want to hit your car or my car.
I'll hold off on calling. Oh, Danielle did it. Call, let the tow truck guy get it.
No tow, no show. Four-hour minimum.
Yeah, four-hour minimum.
Councilman Sargent.
Uh, just two quick things, and, and as Ryan alluded to, there has been a little bit of a run, and I just wanted to publicly send my condolences to Darrell Johnson's family, who's my neighbor, and he had, had cancer and was a blessing at the end, but I don't think there's a prouder Polk City resident than he was. He printed his own Polk City apparel and wore it very proudly, so I wanted to acknowledge him. And on a much happier note, or at least less sober note, hopefully, depending on how it goes, but we really started in earnest today with the neighborhood citizen group. We, Gary and I met with the first representative, we're meeting with the other ones on Wednesday, and look to get that started. So, I am excited about that group, and I'm going to keep saying this, because I want to make sure I told Gerro, and I'll tell all the other folks, that this is in addition to what we do as a city and not supplanting anything. There's no layering between us or the mayor or any of the city staff. It's just another opportunity to hopefully have our finger on the pulse and, and get some information from the citizens, and then also hopefully foster some, some neighborhood growth, so, but it's not meant to be the conduit to get feedback in, it's not that at all, but, again, in addition to, so that's why.
Well, I just want to say some things in addition to what Gary put in his report about the P&amp;Z meeting. The work session first, we, a lot of, a lot of good input. Kathleen gave us a report on a comprehensive plan. We spent a lot of time on tree removal and tree replacement. It was the general consensus to have. It was the general consensus to have an ordinance. We recommend, and this is, I tried to be what a liaison's supposed to do, and take some feelings forward between both bodies, and we have, we recommend, right now, about trees. Well, we have never had a single developer come in here that didn't stand and say, "Oh, we're gonna save as many trees as we can," and go on a week or two later and bulldoze them all down. And don't wanna interrupt development, I don't wanna change anybody's development plans, but I think we need to take a firmer stand on preserving our city. And so, that was talked about. Building in ditches was talked about, about maybe changing our ordinance to prevent that, because that's an ongoing problem. As far as getting to the actual meeting, everything passed unanimous, except the land use agreement, that's coming back. Some very, very positive comments made about stopping Broadway. And when it was come time for my liaison report, we talked a lot about park ground, and I tried to echo some of the things that were discussed in our council meeting the week before. But all in all, I felt like it was one of the most productive P&amp;Z meetings we've had.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna piggyback on your tree comment, because this stemmed from an article in Des Moines Register on September 2nd.
Quite familiar.
Yeah, you know that article well, and I talked to somebody that I know that's apparently, that likes trees, about that, and...
Our local tree expert.
Yeah, he's a pretty good guy.
Won my call.
Won my call, and he's a pretty good guy. But anyway, but I wanted to, and I'm glad you brought this up, because staff did a good job of putting together a survey of what the other communities around us do. And following that, I forwarded some of that information off to said resident, and he looked at it as well, and there's some interesting discussions that he and I've had regarding that, and specifically, you can go up to a development up at Woodhaven, for example, where they did go in and try and save a bunch of oak trees. And unfortunately, when you get all of the bulldozers in there, and they're working the dirt, working the dirt, working the dirt, you can drive through Woodhaven and find a lot of dead old oak trees that they tried to save. And so, there's some, you know, trying to save trees versus having ordinances in place to plant new ones after they're taken out. There's a couple different trains of thought there, but I was very encouraged when Gary said that you guys spoke on that at the P&amp;Z meeting. I think that this is a really good and very important thing. But it was an interesting study, and I appreciate you guys spending the time putting all that together. Danielle?
Oh, yeah, I have a few things, most stemming from a conversation I had with Rich Taylor. Identifying will be obvious why later. I won't get into the sign anymore, even though that took up half the conversation. Another thing about the funeral home he brought up is, when the people came around for him to sign the petition, they had made no mention whatsoever of a crematorium being put in. I was just wondering, was that intentional, or is that an oversight? When he was here, he said that he would've wanted to be able to cremate bodies in the future.
And I think that it was in the future. I think if I remember the P&amp;Z meeting, that it was discussed, and I think even the P&amp;Z, correct me if I'm wrong, but they asked about that at the time, and they said they would come back.
And I, too, had this discussion. What I had told him was, I don't think it's been approved. If they decide to move forward with it, they will have to bring it back to us, and it will have to be approved at that time.
And at this time, they're doing them offsite if there is a cremation.
Okay, 'cause he brought up an issue of air pollution, and started naming off all of the heavy metals that are in our bodies that were gonna be put in the neighborhood. So I don't know if, so I told him that it was something in the future, if at all. And I didn't realize that we would have to approve it again, but that would be even better.
It took 25 years to put burning leaves.
Another thing he brought up is that, he said there was a duplex built across this street that wasn't built to code. They were supposed to have double garages, and there wasn't. And he said, "And it wasn't caught by the inspector, so it had to go to..."
Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment for a variance. We run into roads that are only, not even 10 years old, we have to replace, and nobody can point a finger, we can't get anything out of engineering. Is this just another consultant that we have no recourse? Our only recourse is to change our rules because of, it seems to me, a single garage, as opposed to a double garage, would be pretty damn easy to spot. I don't know how that could've gotten through. So, I mean, he said the first person that bought the property came out and surveyed it, found it was too small to build a duplex on, so we sold it to somebody else that did it. And to me, it's another example of, it's easier to ask forgiveness afterwards than permission ahead of time. Is the information that he presented to me, is any of that inaccurate?
I'm gonna say most of it is fairly accurate. A mistake was made, there's actually two mistakes made. Number of cars that are supposed to be in a garage, and the number of parking stalls that are required that are outside parking stalls. This was handled by a Board of Adjustment under errors and, and error made by the building inspector. And after quite a lengthy meeting, probably one of the longer meetings that we've had, the two-car garage was forgiven, but additional parking off-street had to be provided.
What's our current contract with the company that we're having inspections handled through?
That goes year to year with a 30-day, a 30-day notification of cancellation.
Okay, so calendar here?
Actually, if we said today that someday in the future, 30 days, 45 days, whatever it is, but at least 30 days, the contract would be over.
Okay.
It's 30-day cancellation.
Besides you wanna revisit that, I've got another example of an inspection. I don't know if I can say error, or disputing information, but I wanna wait till the project gets done, so I'll hold on to that for a while.
So cancelling the contract is our only recourse with them?
The Board of Adjustment suggested that the two parties that, which was the property owner, who got the permit, and the person, or the company that made the permitting, the building inspectors, Safe Building Iowa, work out whatever compromise was necessary between the two on the dollar amount. So I don't, I'm not privy to that information.
Okay. And another thing, and this is why I said what it was, he lives at 400 South Second. He says he has a major pothole that he almost broke his ankle on mowing his yard. And I said that we'd have that, I'd have that looked into, if that's possible. You can put something in there. He said a scenario which would probably would happen. If he stepped into that, broke his ankle, turns it into his insurance, asks how it happened, his insurance company most likely is gonna come after the city. So it just seemed like it'd be a good thing to take care of ahead of time.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you. And the only other thing is that I, too, want to share my condolences with the Johnson family. Darryl was a very good friend. I met him shortly after moving to town in 1990. He welcomed me in, which at the time, you were, if you still lived here 30 years, you're considered an outsider. And he welcomed me in the first time he met me. He was a very, very excellent person, one of the best men I've ever known. So I just wanted to say that as well.
That's it. Thank you. Darryl was the epitome of a model citizen, and he literally wore it on his shirt, right?
Yeah.
He's fantastic. Heck of a woodworker, too, guy could do anything. So, condolences definitely. I wanted, I didn't have anything else, but since Dan brought up the building inspector piece, it's somewhat disturbing, the fact that they're not doing, that there was a double garage, only a single, and then, I mean, if we use that as an example, how much time was put into that, right? And we don't know what we got for an ROI. If we're compensated, we have to go through a special meeting of adjustment, we had to put time and effort into that, and those are the things that we also have to true up if we're sincerely true about, sincere about not taking all the staff time and taking too much, et cetera. But I'd like to see that contract looked at. Like to see that contract looked at, if we could, as soon as possible. And if not, bid it out, I don't, whatever process we need to go by, but one or two mistakes is too many, in my opinion. I'd just like to echo everything that's been said about Darryl. I mean, he's a great guy, definitely be missed, and a good example for everybody to lead their lives by the way he did. Any further council discussion? City administrative report?
Just one thing, Your Honor. Our worker comp carrier, which is Iron Municipal Work Comp Association, had a safety site visit. They have three levels of findings. Basically, there is warnings, some needs to be done as soon as possible, and this has to be taken care of today. The city had zero recommendations, and got a clean bill of health. I think that says a lot about the departments. The departments that were reviewed this time were fire, police, and public works. And those generally are the departments where you're gonna get a workers' comp claim.
Was your office cleaned up before they were in?
I believe the correct answer on that, Councilman Sarchet, is I think it was in process.
Okay.
Attorney's report?
Nothing, other than I won't be here if the next meeting's going now, or it will be.
Engineers report?
Nothing.
Nothing for the public works?
Just a few things. Two votes, the main line was paved today, so that street's not curing. They still have the cul-de-sac bubble to pour, but that main line was pouring. And they did pour another half, or I think it's a third of the intersection at Southside Drive today, so that was kinda nice to see, too, so.
Do you have any idea when that's gonna be coming in?
I don't. You know, there's cure times, and...
What was that?
Part of it was poured today. They still have more to go down there before...
I know, I know.
You're talking Southside or Village?
Southside, that was Southside.
Oh, Thursday, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's...
Thursday, I mean, that's what they're hoping to swap, go from Southside to Pine Ridge.
So it's gotta be open.
Yeah. Done or cured on Thursday, that's the question, I think. That's latest we heard. Jake, is he not here?
Oh, Jake's sick, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Finance?
Nothing.
Fire department?
No.
Police department?
Just one quick thing, if everybody hasn't had a chance to look at the police department's Facebook page or the city website. Tanner Richardson, officer of the police department, put on a punt pass kick in a program the NFL puts out for kids to compete against each other, and it's a lot of fun. And the entire department turned up, whereas it, myself, it was my wife's birthday. That was the only reason I was not there. But they really did a good job. We had 29 people participate, and we've received several emails already from parents and people involved that were very appreciative of the officers' efforts and time, and it's, so. I think we had nine kids move on to the regionals, the next step to do. It's not performance, that was cool.
Library not here, citizen liaison, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Seven minutes to get over to the debate.
I gotta go to the birthday party to see my sons.
I was just throwing it out there, I just didn't want you to forget it was gonna be on TV.
Probably get more out of Monday night.
My brother will.